Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is March 27th. We are here for a budget presentation from our town manager, Tom Hall, and our superintendent, Jeff Bruno. Welcome. And pretty much for anyone at home or anyone in the audience, we're here just kind of listen and learn. This is our first exposure to the proposed budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the big reveal this evening. Literally, the councilors just received their budgets tonight. So there's no mystery behind that. That's been something that I've done pretty consistently since I've been here, in part because of my procrastination and we're down to the last minute putting books together. But I think I do look forward to this evening because it's really kind of an important moment. It marks an important part of the process. Our town charter is quite clear that it really obligates me to propose a budget to really start your budget conversation for you and for the community. And then tonight is where I turn it back to you. You have it to do what you will with it, and then you'll turn it back to me at some point, presumably to administer it through the year. But so this night does mark kind of an important ceremonial point of transfer of this document, and it really becomes yours. And we're certainly ready, willing, and able, I think, to assist you as you go through and deliberate and evaluate what your priorities are. A couple of comments just off the top, if I could. Very pleased to be before you to present the proposed budget for FY '25. Tonight really is the culmination of a lot of work. I know the school department starts even earlier than we do sometime in December, as I recall. We're just a bit after that, but it's really the culmination of months of work collectively by town and school staff. I think I can speak for Jeff that we certainly couldn't do it without the support of our senior staff, who really are the knowledge experts in their areas and really help us understand what's important, what isn't, and really shape this budget. We just have the responsibility of presenting all of that hard work to you, but it really takes many, many people, dozens for sure. This year, we certainly recognize the unique situation we find ourselves in with doing a townwide revaluation and all the complication and confusion that can cause, and certainly impact to the taxpayer for all sorts of different reasons, none of which you necessarily have any control over. But they'll all come to bear kind of at the same time and get kind of confused in the wash, so to speak. So recognizing that, I think, I know the council is acutely aware of that, as certainly I am. We really endeavor very carefully to minimize impacts to the taxpayers as best we can. And that certainly is a mantra that we always use, but this year I think it's even more acute, frankly. But also, we endeavor to continue the good work that our residents have told us they value. We've had the luxury of a community survey, two of them in fairly recent time, and they, time and time again, really told us that what we're doing is we're on the right track. And this is a community that they really value. And so we're certainly mindful of that in the back of our minds as we prepare this as well. My goal this year was to deliver a budget as close to your stated goal as possible. And though I've certainly done what I can, and I think I've taken as far as I feel comfortable, I'm not quite there yet. This budget starts at 6.4% net increase, whereas your budget goal was 5%. As we go further, I'll put that in a historical context. By all measures, we're actually starting at a much better place than we do normally. And I have every confidence that we'll reach that goal. But this is the point where many voices, many minds need to be part of the conversation and make these decisions collectively going forward. I certainly have made some tough decisions. There's no new staff requests on the town side. I hope there's time and space for conversation around what those different investment opportunities are. But what's left in here, frankly, were easy choices. These are about really reinvesting in what we have, our people, our facilities, and our equipment. And in my mind, they're quite easy in that regard, particularly given the fact that our residents have confirmed that we're on the right track in large part. So a few final comments. This budget really is about taking care of what we have. It's essentially a level services budget from the, I'm speaking from the town side. It really does focus and invest in our people, in our largest asset, which is human capital. The quality of our services is directly related to the caliber and the quality of our staff. And we need to do what we can to be competitive, to attract and retain the best and the brightest. And very pleased to have a tremendous staff that we have already. It's also about being committed to our principles, treating staff fairly and competitively, again, reinvesting in what we have, and not taking that for granted and letting it slide, frankly. It's also about seeing initiatives through. This council and councils before you have put forward some fairly bold and important initiatives that are multi-year in their reach. And this budget intends to continue that good work, really building upon the investments that have already been made. And also just staying true to our commitments. For years, we've really been thoughtful about understanding fund balance, and it's important to our bond rating, understanding that it's the people's money and not keeping too much of it. And we strive to strike that balance this year, and you'll see some proposals as we go further. So without further ado, Superintendent Bruno and myself would like to share some highlights. And so we do have a couple of slides here, if you'll bear with us. So this is just a high-level overview. These materials certainly are in the budget books. I don't know, Nick, if you could just slightly move, not you, but the box on the screen.
Excellent. Thank you. So a lot of numbers up here, but this is, this does give you a full snapshot shot of the entire budget, from operating to capital, to all the different related items. Most notably, you know, it all rolls up into that bottom left, right-hand corner. That's 6.4% net increase. You may note that there's also a proposed use of fund balance, which is something different, and it hasn't occurred in the last 10 years or so. And we'll speak to that in a bit more detail. But I don't want to belabor these numbers. I guess I would simply note that municipal net is up about 8.7%, and we'll get into some of those drivers why. And the school net is up about 4.6, or almost 4.7% itself. That's a bit, just as a historical footnote, that's a bit kind of flipped. Usually, the school, for all sorts of good and valid reasons, you know, is slightly higher than the town. We've got some unique pressures this year, and they have some unique opportunities through additional funding from the state that present that. But we're all in this together. Is that right? So next, please, Liam.
This year, I mentioned at the top, there are some unique challenges. And they're not necessarily related to the budget, but again, they come, they come all at the same time and to the taxpayer. That probably doesn't much matter. And so being mindful of that, you know, the townwide revaluation is that, is really that elephant in the room, if you will. Hopefully, it's not an elephant anymore, because Nick Cludier, our assessor, I think, has done a tremendous job of talking about this early and often, and really reaching out to all areas of our town, to our neighborhoods and neighborhood groups. So the word is out, I think, and I think we'll likely have a lot of folks paying close attention to your budget process, because this is the part of the equation that you control. The other parts, they are what they are. And the data will bring us to those, to the right decisions. But as has been discussed at some detail, and I'm not going to go into tonight, the revale has a number of different factors that will affect taxpayers differently. And again, that really needs to be front of mind as we think about how much we're going to spend, because that's certainly part of the equation. Another factor that's coming to bear, not due to anything we've done, is the elimination of the state's senior property tax stabilization program that will affect 1,800 taxpayers or so that qualify for that program. Essentially, those folks will be seeing two years of budget increases. That will be a unique effect to that small group, but very important group. So just be mindful. That's a unique factor this year that's coming to bear. And intentionally, none of the budget documents include a tax rate calculation. That's typically, you know, a leading part of the conversation. Because the revale is going to complicate that for all sorts of reasons, we've hesitated to calculate that now. My curiosity has been killing me, and I'll share a couple of things, kind of things where in normal circumstance. But for purposes of all printed materials, we purposely stayed away from any tax rate calculation. Having said that, the assessor's schedule disappeared before the council on April 17th. And I believe we'll be in a position to share some fairly detailed information regarding the revale and the impacts across the tax base. And so the point for you to keep in mind is that before you're asked to vote on this budget, and certainly before the voters are asked to consider the school budget validation, the tax rate projections will be known and widely publicized. I guess I might as well just mention the fact, I alluded to it. Taking, putting aside for a moment the impact, potential impact of the revale in a normal year, using the council's policy of expected growth and valuation. Now, the town continues to perform as we have in recent history pretty consistently. With the starting point of 6.4% net increase, that would equate to a tax rate increase of 3.66%. So just to put that in perspective and historical perspective, and frankly, if you get to your 5%, that will be a 2.24% increase in tax rate. So we're talking about $1.2 million change in that budget to reach those goals. So I think that's, I know that's entirely attainable, and I'm confident with your help and wisdom, we'll get there. Next, please. The objectives on the municipal side was really the level services budget. It's investing in retaining of our municipal staff. What we've seen over the last two to three years, fueled by unprecedented wage inflation, unprecedented challenges in labor market of filling really key, important positions, and I know this is true of the school side as well. We are seeing that just to keep competitive, even middle of the pack, we need to significantly increase our wages. And again, human capital is our most important asset here. The other part of level services is maintaining existing facilities and equipment. And then this is about responding to community priorities, so investing in traffic and transportation improvements and plans.
People dozens for sure. Uh, this year, we certainly recognize the unique situation we find ourselves in. Uh, with with doing a townwide revaluation and all the complication and confusion that can cause. And certainly impact to the taxpayer from for all sorts of different reasons. None of which you necessarily have any control over, but they'll all come to bear at kind of at the same time and get. Kind of confused in the wash, so to speak. So recognizing that I think I know the council is acutely aware of that as as certainly I am. Um, we really endeavor very carefully to minimize impacts to the taxpayers best we can. And and that certainly is a mantra that we we always use, but this year I think it's even more acute, frankly. But also, uh, we endeavor to continue the good work that our residents have told us they value. Uh, we've had the luxury of a community survey, uh, two of them in fairly recent time, and they've time and time again. Uh, really told us that what we're doing is we're on the right track and and this is a community that they really value. And so we're certainly mindful of that in the back of our minds as we, um, prepare this as well. Uh, my goal this year was to deliver a budget as close to your stated goal as possible. And though I I've certainly done what I I can, and I think I've taken as far as I feel comfortable. Uh, I'm not quite there yet. Uh, this budget starts at six point four percent net increase, whereas your budget goal was five percent. As we go further, I'll put that in a historical context, uh, by all measures, we're actually starting at a much better place than we do normally. And I have every confidence that we'll reach that goal. Uh, but this is the point where many voices, many minds need to be part of the conversation and make these decisions collectively going forward. I certainly have made some tough decisions. There's no new staff requests on the town side. I hope there's time and space for conversation around what those, um, different investment opportunities are. Uh, but what's left in here, frankly, were easy choices. Uh, these are about really reinvesting in what we have, our people. Our facilities and our our equipment, and in my mind, uh, they're quite easy in that regard, particularly. Given the fact that our residents, uh, have confirmed that we're on the right track in large part. So a few, uh, final comments, uh, this budget really is about taking care of what we have. It's essentially a level services budget from the, uh, I'm speaking from the town side. Uh, it really does focus and invest, um, in our people, uh, in our largest asset, which is human capital. The quality of our services is directly related to the caliber and the quality of our staff. And we need to do what we can to be competitive, to attract and and retain the best and the brightest. And very pleased to have a tremendous staff that we have already. It's also about being committed to our principles, uh, treating staff fairly and competitively, again, reinvesting in what we have. Um, and not taking that for granted and letting it slide, frankly. It's also about seeing initiatives through, uh, this council and councils before you have. Put forward some fairly bold and important initiatives that are multi-year in their in their reach. And, uh, this budget intends to continue that good work, um, really building upon the investments that have already been made. And also just staying true to our our commitments, uh, for years, we've really been, um. Thoughtful about understanding fund balance and it's important to our bond rating. Um, understanding that it's the people's money and and not keeping too much of it, um, and and we strive to strike that balance, uh, this year. And you'll see some proposals as we go further. So without further ado, uh, Superintendent Bruno and myself would like to share some highlights. Uh, and so we do have a couple of slides here if you'll bear with us. So this is just a high level overview. Um, these materials certainly are in the budget books. Uh, I don't know if Nick, if you could just slightly move, not you, but the, uh, the box on the screen. So. Thank. Excellent. Thank you. So a lot of numbers up here, but this is, uh, this does give you a full snapshot. Uh, shot of the entire budget from, uh, operating to capital, uh, to all the different, uh, related items. Uh, most, most notably, you know, it all rolls up into that bottom, uh, left, right-hand corner. Uh, that's six point four, uh, percent net increase. You'll, you may note that there's also a proposed use of fund balance, which is something different. And it hasn't occurred in the last 10 years or so, and we'll speak to that in a bit more detail. Uh, but I don't want to belabor these numbers. Um, uh, I I guess I would simply note that municipal net is up about eight point seven percent. And we'll get into some of those drivers why, uh, and the school net is up, uh, about four point. Six or almost four point seven percent itself. Uh, that's a bit, just as a historical footnote, uh, that's a bit kind of flipped. Uh, usually the the school, for all sorts of good and valid reasons, uh, you know, is is slightly higher than the town. We've got some unique pressures this year, um, and they have some unique opportunities, uh, through, uh, additional funding from the state that, uh, present that. But, um, uh, we're all in this together. Is that, is that right? So next, please, Liam. This year, I I mentioned at the top, there are some unique challenges. And they're not necessarily related to the budget, but again, they come, they come, uh, all at the same time and and to the taxpayer that probably doesn't much matter. And and so being mindful of that, um, you know, the the townwide revaluation is that is really that elephant in the room, if you will. Hopefully it's not an elephant anymore because, uh, Nick Cludier, our assessor, I think, has done a tremendous job of talking about this early and often. Um, and really reaching out to all areas of our town, to our neighborhoods and and neighborhood groups. Um, so the word is out, I think, and I think we'll. Uh, likely have a lot of folks paying close attention to your budget process because this is the part of the equation that you control. Uh, the other parts, uh, they are what they are and the data will will, uh, will will bring us to those, uh, to the right decisions. But as as has been discussed at some detail, and I'm not going to go into tonight, the revale has a a number of different. Uh, factors that will affect taxpayers differently. Uh, and again, that really, uh, it it needs to be front of mind as we think about how much we're we're going to spend. Because that's certainly part of the equation. Another factor that's coming to bear, not due to anything we've done, is the elimination of the state's senior property tax stabilization program. That will affect, uh, eighteen hundreds taxpayers or so that qualify for that program. Uh, essentially those folks will be seeing two years of budget increases. Uh, that will be a unique effect to that small group, but very important group. Uh, um, so just be mindful, that's a a unique factor this year that's coming to bear. And intentionally, uh, none of the budget documents include a tax rate calculation. That's typically, uh, you know, I draw a leading part of the conversation. Because the revale is going to complicate that, uh, for all sorts of reasons. Um, we've hesitated to calculate that now. Uh, uh, my curiosity has been killing me and I'll share a couple of things, uh, kind of things were in normal circumstance. But for purposes of all printed materials, we've we purposely stayed away from any tax rate calculation. Having said that, the assessor's schedule disappeared before the council on April seventeenth. Uh, and I believe we'll be in a position to share some fairly detailed information regarding the revale and and the impacts across the tax base. And so, uh, the point for you to keep in mind is that before you're asked to vote on this budget. And certainly before the voters are are asked to consider the school budget validation, uh, the tax rate projections will be known and widely publicized. Um, I guess this, I might as well just, uh, mention the fact I I alluded to it. Taking, putting aside for a moment, the the impact, potential impact of the revale. In a normal year, using the council's policy of expected growth and valuation. Um, you know, the town is continues to perform as we have in in recent history pretty consistently. Uh, with the the starting point of, uh, six point four percent net increase. That would equate to a tax rate increase of three point six six percent. So just to put that in perspective and and historical perspective. Uh, and frankly, if you get to your five percent, that will be a two point two four percent increase in tax rate. So, um, we're talking about, um, uh, one point two million dollars, a change in that budget to reach those goals. So I think that's, I know that's entirely attainable and I'm confident, uh, with your help and wisdom, we'll get there. Next, please. Uh, the objectives on the municipal side, uh, was really the level services budgets. It's investing, uh, in retaining of our municipal staff. Uh, what we've seen over the last two to three years, uh, fueled by, uh, unprecedented wage inflation. Unprecedented challenges in labor market of of filling really key, important positions, and I know this is true of the school side as well. Um, we are seeing that, uh, just to keep competitive, uh, even middle of the pack, we need to significantly, uh, increase our wages. And and again, human capital is our most important asset here. Uh, the other part of level services is maintaining existing facilities and equipment. And then this is about, uh, responding to to community priorities. So investing in traffic and transportation improvements and plans, that's a point that was resounding in the community survey. As was sidewalk infrastructure and maintenance, and we've prioritized those, uh, in the operating and capital budgets. As an aside, I believe the finance committee asked that, uh, particularly in capital. And, uh, that we note any new investments and we have, so those are flagged separately. And I hope and expect we'll have time to, uh, review those, but that's really the exception to the rule. And there's, I think, very good justification as to why those, uh, those remain at this point. For budget drivers, this is just a quick overview. Um, many of these are fairly typical. Uh, you know, sixty-five percent of our budget or so is, uh, salary and benefit related. So not surprisingly, just, uh, normal colas, uh, is a significant number. This year, we have the unique occurrence where we have four collective bargaining agreements that are all open and expiring end of June. Liam Gallagher is heading up the negotiations and has obviously fully engaged with all, um, all units. Um, but those are open and we need to make sure we have sufficient adequate resources to to settle those contracts. Um, that's a number that, uh, we hope will get more refined as we get closer and settle some of these contracts. But we need to start with adequate resources. Software maintenance, uh, this is in part, uh, pandemic pricing. They kind of, it it appears that many of the software companies kept their pricing purposely low and for which we thank them. But they appear to be making some catch up, uh, and with increases. The other big change this year is it will be the first year of the new dispatch software, the CAD system. Which carries a very significant annual licensing and and permitting cost. So we're seeing significant increases there, and I think to a lesser extent, the s- school has seen some similar pressure. Uh, solid waste and recycling costs are up. Uh, this is the first year that the town and the school will need to provide for the paid family. Uh, medical leave act, uh, payroll tax. And that's a number that, uh, we hope will get refined as we go forward. We'll see. Accrued Vic and, uh, sickened vacation, uh, I don't want to get in the weeds, but we made some decisions, uh, as part of the audit for FY twenty-three. And, uh, we had fully funded that liability. Those, uh, those reserves have now fallen to fund balance, and I think that was the right thing to do. But what the consequence of that is that we need to pay that, pay as we go, if you will, or the expected cost. And health insurance, uh, we're carrying a ten percent increase, uh, for health insurance. Next. So revenue decreases. So at the same time, we have costs going up, we have some notable, uh, challenges on the revenue side. Uh, revenue sharing is going down. This is kind of part of the mystery of their complicated funding formula. I think Liam has spent some time to understand that and perhaps finance committee will want to know more about that. But the net effect is, um, we're seeing about a four hundred thousand dollar decrease, uh, from the current year. Homestead reimbursement, this decrease is directly resulted, uh, a result of the expected notable drop in our tax rate. Uh, essentially the twenty-five thousand dollar home test set exemption. Or a tax rate of, say, sixteen dollars, uh, is a lot more by way of reimbursement than for ten dollars, if that's what our tax rate ends up being. So that's a function of, um, uh, additional value we expect to capture as part of the revaluation. And then permit fee revenue, this is predominantly in building permit, but it's true both, uh, also in, uh, electrical and and plumbing permits. Uh, we've seen decreased activity and that's projected to occur, you know, continue occurring into, uh, next fiscal year as well. So with that, I invite my colleague Jeff Bruno to address some of the school challenges and opportunities.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, Tom. Um, and I just wanted to echo, uh, some of his comments at the beginning. Uh, th- this is, um, this is my third budget, uh, to present here in Scarborough and and, um. I think I've 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 mentioned this, uh, whether it was last year or the year before, this is a special town and a special community. And a lot of the collaboration, um, and interdependence that naturally happens also happens as part of this process. Um, although the binder seems thicker this year. But there's a lot of work and a lot of effort and a lot of people that go into, uh, developing our budget, uh, and and really making sure that. That when we, when we have this opportunity to present to the council, uh, and to the board. Um, that that it's reflective of, um, the interdependence and collaboration that happens across departments. And that's, that's super, uh, I think, um, leads to a better product, leads to a better presentation. And ultimately, uh, serves the needs of our community, uh, better and our kids. So, um, I get, I get the privilege of being able to present the part of the budget that, you know, we think about like school budget priorities. Well, the priority is our kids, right? And and so all of our priorities revolve around what's going to be best for meeting the needs of our students, uh, K to twelve. So, uh, just to, this first slide really kind of identifies some of the the big bullets. So, um, the leadership council worked together to put together this, uh, proposal. To, um, really hit the following bullets and priorities. So maintaining our current programs and services in the coming year. So you heard a lot, uh, from Tom, you know, we're really, this is a year where we're, um. Trying to keep what we have, uh, and then continue to face the challenges, um, that we look at this year and into the future. So mandated services and ensuring compliance, uh, making sure we have the resources to meet the needs, both of our special education students. Um, general education students, our incoming kindergarten, uh, students at all levels. Maintaining our targeted class size and student teacher ratios, uh, for optimum learning. Responding to our student data and meeting the individualized needs of all students through, um, our multi-tiered system of support, which is really. We have multiple ways in which we meet the needs of the kids, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's in small groups, working with. Uh, kids in a, in alternative settings, uh, there's, there's a whole multitude of ways. Um, that we've developed effective, uh, supports for kids. Uh, and then continuing to implement, uh, developmentally appropriate social emotional learning, uh, which really also involves. Um, making sure that kids are ready to learn in the classroom. And so that includes executive functioning skills, that includes, um, you know, you know, making sure that, uh, you have. Effective ways to build community within the classroom and across the school. So, uh, a lot of those efforts are part of, um, our priorities and then part of our vision for where we want to go, uh, as a school district. Um, some other bullets, if we advance the next slide, we got this, uh, second page of priorities here. Um, providing appropriate professional staffing levels for our K to five learning commons. This is something that's come up, uh, actually probably for the last six or seven years. Uh, we have one librarian for four schools, um, approximately eleven hundred kids. Between eleven hundred and twelve hundred kids. Um, so so we're really looking to add an FTE so that we can have. Um, learning commons, someone to manage that at at the three K to two schools, uh, as well as, uh, Wentworth School, three to five. Um, expanding opportunities for student enrichment, uh, collaborating with town leadership and the Board of Education and Town Council. As we, uh, look for, uh, an active investigation into a KDA strategic building project and our facilities needs across the district. Um, that's been part of our board goals, um, for the last couple of years. And and again, extends and obviously into this year, into the future. Uh, developing adaptive communication strategies to increase learning for access and inclusion for all of our students. And then I mentioned this, um, we have a particularly, um. Challenging incoming group of kindergarten staff, uh, kindergarten students, rather, uh, many of whom are already, well, no, staff are fine. Staff are great. So, uh, we do have some, some, uh, some challenges with this incoming kindergarten class in terms of, uh, the number of students who are already receiving CDS. Services and are on, uh, on, uh, individualized educational plans. So, um, that's a piece of, a pretty significant piece of, uh, a budget ask for this year or part of our budget planning. Uh, in terms of a couple of reductions, so, uh, this is Kate Bolton's favorite slide. You know, we really dig in school by school, position by position. Where, um, can we save? Where can we reduce? How can we, um, make the most efficient use of our resources? Um, and this, this gets pretty close to a million dollars worth of, uh, reductions for this year. Uh, the the one that I'd like to highlight is the three hundred sixty-six thousand for personnel turnover and reallocation of positions. We really looked at, um, class size and then also look at, you got, you get fluctuations in cohorts of kids. So you'll have some, you know, grade levels that are unusually small, and then you'll have some grade levels that are unusually large. And that, and that you can, by, um, being smart with how you allocate, um, teaching staff and and how you. Manage your positions, uh, sometimes you can reduce number of teachers, uh, per grade level. And certain areas and and then require more teachers for for an unlarge, unusually large class. So we actually had three different grade levels that have unusually smaller, um, classroom cohorts. So we were actually able to, um, trim the number of classroom teachers, uh, and staff by three. Uh, which, which allows us to make some key reductions, uh, and then use some of those reductions for. Positions and, um, some of the asks and some of the additional positions that we're looking to to fund for this year's budget. So the next slide, uh, we'll talk about additional positions and proposals for this year. And I think you'll see as we go through each of the bullets, they they line up, um, or should line up with the priorities that we've presented in previous slides. So, um, the first is, is this incoming, uh, kindergarten class. Uh, requires an additional eleven ed tech positions to support students. Uh, who are receiving CDS, uh, services and are on individualized educational plans already, uh, prior to entering kindergarten. Um, also, we're trying to maintain targeting, targeted class size for optimum learning. So there's a position at Wentworth, we have an unusually large cohort of, uh, students at Wentworth. So we're, uh, additional teacher there is required. Again, I mentioned having, uh, uh, another K to five learning, learning commons. So a one point O FTE librarian position at the K to two level, uh, so that we can, we can have. You know, uh, basically. Having a librarian who has between eleven hundred and twelve hundred kids, we've gone through a couple of librarians for that reason. So, uh, we want to keep our our current library and then also be able to meet the needs of kids and strengthen, uh, our K to five learning commons. And then, uh, supporting inclusivity with adaptive communication strategies. This is actually, uh, a position that's currently grant funded that we want to, um, make sure that we maintain, uh, as part of this year's budget. Next slide. As I mentioned before, uh, two student support teaching positions for early intervention for our incoming kindergarten class in our, uh, primary schools. Our three K to two primary schools. And then, um, talking more about, uh, multi-tiered system of supports. Uh, the, these are positions to provide specialized academic support and address learning gaps. Um, the, the days of quarantining and masking and some of the. The COVID experience of the hybrid year and the year after, those feel like a little bit like a distance, distant memory. But we are still addressing, uh, multiple significant needs with our students across all grade levels. Uh, and then we're looking to expand opportunities for student enrichment. With a, uh, with a, a point two five chorus teacher at the middle school, we will be able to offer. Chorus during the school day for all three grades. Um, we're one of the few actually middle schools, um, in the area that that can't do that currently. Um, so I think that's, uh, something, and if you've, if you've been to the all district, um, chorus concert. The number of singers and musicians that we have in our high school and middle school has probably quadrupled. In the last couple of years, um, so we want to continue again, building the, um, the music program. But, uh, also o- offering that opportunity for kids at the middle school level is huge. Um, and then esports, so there, there, right now, there are almost forty high schools across Maine. Who compete in esports and, uh, we want to get in the mix. So, uh, that's, that's another, um, expanded opportunity for student enrichment. And, uh, again, just to kind of summarize some of the key school budget drivers for us. Um, and and the positions that we're asking for as part of, uh, this budget. The, the investment of five hundred seventy-two thousand, which is the, uh, eleven positions. Um, for, for educational technicians represents about just under one percent. Of the proposed FY twenty-five operating budget. And then, um, the other new proposals and new asks represent just under two percent. Of the FY twenty-five operating budget with a new net investment. Of about one point three percent of the proposed fiscal year twenty-five operating budget. So Tom mentioned at the, you know, if you look across town departments, personnel accounts for a little over sixty percent. Uh, at the schools, it's a little over eighty percent. So, um, our budget is, is our people, is our educators. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of, uh, the costs that are just the cost of doing business. Um, line up with our collective bargaining agreements. So that really sets what our salary and wage increases will be. Um, the health insurance rates too, we, we've, um, I believe we've budgeted for an eight percent increase. Uh, for this year, that can fluctuate, we'll know more, uh, within a couple of weeks as to what that, uh, insurance rate, the anthem premiums will be. Uh, this new paid family leave payroll tax, um, which potentially there's still, there, it's still undefined exactly what. The impact will be for us, um, with the, with the passage and implementation of that. So that, that's still variable, uh, we've put in for, uh, the amount of two hundred thousand. Total personnel cost increase of three point nine million. Uh, just some of, some of the things that we're, uh, accounting for as part of non-personnel expenditures. Our enrollment is projected to grow, so, uh, you know, I've, I've made this presentation al- already publicly as part of, um, our school building project. Social emotional needs of our students continue to increase, learning gaps and needs for academic support persist. Uh, I think you hear that, heard that throughout the presentation around our, uh, budget priorities. And then, as Tom also mentioned, um, you know, the labor market is is challenging, uh, for us in particular. With bus drivers and educational technicians. So, um, in terms of, uh, open, open contracts as well. We're currently negotiating contracts, uh, with both of those groups. As well as, um, nutrition and custodial staff and facility staff. Oh. So, um, the first slide. All the way down to the lower right on the school side, we're at for, uh, a four point six eight percent increase. Hey, you move, there you go. Lower left there, uh, we're at four point six eight percent increase. As Tom mentioned, in in the last couple of years, actually, that number above or below the five percent, uh, was flipped. One of the things that, uh, the schools, uh, has benefited from, and you can kind of see, see it in this slide is, is. Uh, the non-tax revenue line there, um, up twenty point four two percent. That significant increase in non-tax revenue is mostly due to a significant increase in general purpose, purpose aid and GPA. Um, so our state sub- subsidy went up significantly. In part because, uh, the local contribution percentage went down, uh, which helps us. And then also the percentage of the foundation budget that the state. Will give to Scarborough in terms of high receiver versus low receiver, that percentage actually went up from fifteen percent to about eighteen percent. So that led to an increase in in general purpose aid of, um, just under two million, about one point eight million. Um, and so that obviously, uh, has an impact in terms of the overall tax request in the lower right. Well, I got for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, this isn't just an operating budget, it's also a capital budget. So I just want to give a couple of highlights of the capital budget. Uh, it's a fairly large request, uh, it's about over eighteen million dollars combined town and school. That's broken down about six point four for school, just under twelve for town. I think that's a bit misleading because wrapped up in that, um, including a very expensive repair to Blackpoint Road, which we expect will be, uh. Uh, reimbursed by FEMA through FEMA, um, that's four million dollars alone. So let's just run down through this list, uh, about one point four million of this is, is proposed to be appropriated. So we raised tax dollars in FY twenty-five to, to fund various capital projects. Uh, just under nine million is to be bonded. Um, as I alluded to earlier, the downtown TIF is, uh, supporting about a million dollars in capital investment. I mentioned the four million dollar grant from FEMA. I mentioned the four million dollar grant from FEMA. Just under two million dollars are projects that would, that do require two projects, voter approval. Those being a new pumper truck and the police department has put together, I think, a very sound and solid proposal for. In-car and body worn cameras for all police cruisers and all, all officers. This is a project that we've talked about for many years. I'm very excited to say that this is really being led by the staff, which is really hugely important. It's obviously not a cheap proposition and it's something that we'd, we'd love to engage, you know, the finance committee and the full council on. Beyond that, we do have a number of projects coming from reserves, about a million dollars to fund the Muzzy Road. Improvement, this, this will be combined with private money and state money. For some councils that have been around for a while, these are prior commitments that are just kind of coming around and we can certainly go into that in better detail. And also a very, very smaller projects that are supported through recreation impact fees. These are fees that are not in place yet in some part, these are coming to the council late spring, early summer. And we expect they'll, they'll be in place and hope they'll be in place, you know, by midsummer at the latest. I do want to note. That there, there are funds for long range school planning. The superintendent alluded to the fact that there's an ongoing effort, there's, the need has not gone away. And all of prior approvals have been exhausted or funds have been exhausted, so there, there do need, does need to be additional funds. To hire the requisite professionals to help support that effort. There is no school project per se in this budget, I think that is probably self-evident in that we're not sure what it is or when it will be. But that's a notable exception from the capital plan at this point. And just as an aside for the council's benefit, there are a number of capital investments that have served to advance council goals. And our survey results, the ones that come to mind, we, we would like to move forward with a climate action plan. Which I think builds on some of the work that's ongoing right now. We also have a number of initiatives for sidewalk repair and maintenance and winter maintenance, which I think. Was a takeaway that I listened to very carefully from the survey. With respect to TIF revenues, we do have two TIF, existing TIF districts in town, one is coming to a close. We probably have three more years left on the Higginson Parkway TIF. Just to remind the council, we have satisfied all prior CEA obligations, so all of these TIF revenues now come to benefit the town. This year I prioritized, we expect we'll get just over one point four million from that TIF. I'm prioritizing all of that to go to reduce the general fund deficit that was created over time. The great news with that is that dollar for dollar, that will increase fund balance, so we've really made that a priority. With respect to the downtown TIF, that's the one that continues to increase year over year. And all expectations are that it will continue on that trajectory. We're projecting just under three million dollars in that TIF alone next year. And in rough, fairly rough numbers, I'm using, proposing that we use those revenues to offset about two million dollars in operating costs. And we, there's some detail in the budget that will tell you which ones, and then about a million dollars in capital costs. Next, please. With respect to the use of fund balance, this is something that we, in terms of staying committed to our principles, this is something we've very consciously. Stayed away from, just the quick cliff notes on fund balance. These are funds that have been unexpended or unexpected perhaps as well on the revenue side. But essentially they're funds that weren't needed to operate, to, for operations, and so they kind of go to our. Go to our savings account, so to speak. And there are very good reasons that's for sound financial planning to have certain amount in reserves. And we've chosen to have a target range between eight percent and twelve percent. And we've been steadily building that over time based on our vigilance and, and I think commitment to that. Next Liam, I think you'll. So this year, just given the fact that the revale is unique and different and will have some unique impacts on certain taxpayers. I'm proposing that we consider the use of fund balance. And the amount that I'm proposing, I think has some sound basis, if you will. Each year we raise overlay, these are funds that are raised through property taxes. To be used at the assessor's discretion to the extent that there are changes in valuation or incorrect, or corrections that need to be made. And you'll see over the last three years, we just calculated the amount raised in each year and the, the amount actually expended. So just in the last three years, we've essentially raised about a million dollars more than we needed for that purpose. And the good news is that becomes fund balance, that's money that was raised and, and not needed. And I would respectfully suggest that if we don't use it now, when will we? And I don't say that cavalierly, I don't think this is an irresponsible suggestion. And I expect the finance committee to want to know more about that and perhaps we need to get our financial advisor. But we've done calculations based on the certainty associated with the reduction of the general fund deficit and therefore building fund balance. That by the end of FY twenty-five will be above the top of our range, will be over twelve percent. Long story short, I don't think this is going to harm us at all in terms of when it comes to bond rating. I, I, I think at the end of the day, this is taxpayer money and again, if not now, when? Next, please. Very quickly, we've touched on most of these, the item's still in motion on the town side, collective bargaining agreements. We hope to land that plane or those planes shortly. I think for both the town and the school, we're interested to know more about the, the, this new, the state paid medical leave costs. So those will likely get refined. Again, I expect we'll have a robust conversation around the use of fund balance and hope we surround ourselves with other opinions in there, in that discussion. On the school side, the insurance numbers will be known in the coming weeks or month. Again, the state aid, state paid medical leave, special education costs. And I included, forgive me Jeff and Kate, funding for capital investments, there are resources available that have not been programmed. That I think are worthy of at least consideration discussion, but that will be up for the collective boards to, to work through. Next. So bring it all together, the bottom line, as we started, this comes in at a net budget increase of six point four percent. To put it in historical perspective, just looking over the last three fiscal years. The average starting point of this conversation is at eight point two percent. So I, I stand before you confidently saying we are far better off than we typically are. And much closer to your stated target, so again, I'm supremely confident that we will get there. Next. This is just a quick slide I like to include, I'm not sure if anyone else likes it, but I do, so it's going to be here. But this, there's a lot of really good information, so this shows is, this shows essentially ten years, actually eleven years. Valuation changes, keep in mind, two thousand eighteen and nineteen were revaluation years. So there's some oddities there from a valuation and tax rate perspective. But it also shows you the total tax levy and kind of the changes of budget. And changes in tax rate, you'll see in, in years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we're just over one percent increase in tax rate. And then coming out of the pandemic, both town and school, we're looking kind of to rebuild what we had. Trenched in on during those kind of uncertain times. And not surprisingly, we see some higher increases, but I think we'll get back to that normalcy. And on balance, we're, we're almost always below three percent, I'll say without a few notable exceptions. Next. So staying engaged in the budget process, we have a, a variety of different resources at our disposal. We've got staff that I think is tremendous at providing timely and accurate information. Through our e-newsletter, we have a, a separate budget portal that's been created. And will continue to be populated with information as we move forward. Incidentally, the, this budget in the book is now available on that portal. And, and so it's available for anyone to look at and certainly use. There's a series of public meetings, the next slide will go into a little more detail, but for the public's benefit. I know that there are budget roundtables that are scheduled in, later in April, on the twentieth, April twentieth, twenty-second and twenty-fourth. The portal will have some detailed information, those are purposely at different times of the day and days of the week to encourage participation. And then I'm always pleased to encourage you to speak to your counselor or member of Board of Education if you have any comments or concerns with the budget. Next, please. Oh, I should mention that we've begun a frequently asked questions, this has been something that I think has been fairly well received. In spite of the fact that we do this for a living, we have questions of the budget and we figured if we do, others do. And so we start to populate an FAQ with questions that we've posed internally. And that's intended to be kind of a, a living document and kind of built out as we go. So that's available now and, and again, will, will, will be added to as we move forward in the conversation. So this is just a, a quick overview, as you see that a lot of different steps in front of us. This is, this is kind of a regular cadence. It really, I want to highlight a couple of key ones, so next Wednesday, April third, there will be a joint budget workshop. Town Council and Board of Education, prior to the council's meeting. And then at that meeting, council will accomplish first reading, by then the school board will have already taken action. And then looking forward, there's another joint workshop on May one. And that is the official public hearing as well on the budget. And all of this is building up to a second reading and, and final adoption of the budget at, on May fifteenth. And that puts us in a position for the school budget validation vote on June eleventh. So that's an overview of the timeline for adoption. Just a couple of closing comments, I'd be remiss not to acknowledge key members of staff, certainly Liam Gallagher. Norman Kildow has really stepped up big time. You might recall this time last year, he was still trying to close out the audit, so I let him do that. But this year he's really stepped up and been fully involved in the budget process. And I certainly couldn't do any of this without Tony Justice, Tony is a miracle worker. So lastly, I just want to say, and I'm not going to belabor it, but the budget book is, we think, a tremendous resource. It really tries to provide some. Education in terms of some of the important dynamics at work, provides some historical context. And then I think all the detail you should need when considering the operating, operating budget and capital budget. In the school for its part, does a stellar job. The last sections, two sections of the book include a, a complete copy of their budget submission and their appendix. And I encourage you, it, it is, it's not just nighttime reading, it's, it's, it really tells a really important picture. And please take the time if you're so inclined. So with that, Mr. Chairman, our comments are complete.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Jeff, for spending the time and, and all the staff that put in the hours and the effort. School board I know has already done a few reviews and we appreciate everything. As far as our next steps, I think, you know, we need to take some time and read this, digest it. If we have questions, I would suggest that we start with our council, I mean, our finance chair would be glad to start being the. The holder of those questions from us. Just because, you know, they're, you know, you at finance are going to end up workshopping a lot of this. So if, and if anyone in the public has any questions or comments, I think Tom hit it on the head. You can send it to the council full email address or the school board full email address and we'll get it to the appropriate spots.
Staff is certainly available as well, I don't mean to suggest otherwise. I should just mention on behalf of the finance committee, they are choosing to do the review slightly differently this year. Typically, it's been five or six reviews, you know, over the next six weeks. This year they've identified two dates, kind of longer sessions, the first of which is on Thursday, April eleventh. From two to seven in these chambers. And then the second one is the following morning on Friday, April twelfth, from eight to one. And the attendants to really kind of work through, and we've scheduled departments in, in hopefully bite sized pieces. And the goodness with that is that's going to leave them four or five weeks after that, so I expect there'll be additional. Conversation, probably more targeted, once they've received kind of the initial overview from staff, so excited to be part of that process. Any final thoughts, questions from? Again, thank you all very much, I'll go and adjourn it, have a good evening.